I call this meeting to order. Could we all stand and salute the flag? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Linden Board of Education's first meeting for the New Year 2024. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 20, 2024, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, the Tapper-Pinter Linden, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at a regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Here.
Spino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada-Casada. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Ulysse.
Present.
Ms. Armstead. And Dr. Berghammer.
Present. Before we continue, I would like to say something to my colleagues and to the people of Linden. This is the beginning of my second year as the President of the Linden Board of Education. And I must admit that being a board president is much more complex than those described in any handbook I have ever read. But as I continue to fill the service role as board president, I have come to the understanding that the power of being a board president is developed largely through the respect and trust of those you serve. And the success of your leadership depends significantly on the strength of your leadership. In my first year, I learned that rarely is there a successful school district without an outstanding board. And rarely is there an outstanding board without an effective board president. I also learned in my two years of being on this board is that the value of leadership is the ability of this board to work with the superintendent, the business administrator and his team, teachers, staff, parents, students, as well as the Linden community. This is why we formed the It Takes a Village Award, because we believe that when everyone works together, everyone wins. I have also learned that there should be no surprise in public meetings for the superintendent, the board president, fellow board members, the staff, and the community. A word of advice to all board members who aspire to be board presidents in the future: Be prepared. You are leading a school district with some very, very smart people. And because of their knowledge, their skill set, and their commitment to excellence, they expect the best from us. Because this board, my colleagues and friends, have entrusted me with a second year of leadership, my promise to you is to continue to be a forward thinker, continue to be a team player, to hear your voice and to listen to you with respect as to what you say, because everyone has something to say. Furthermore, I promise to continue to hear the voice of the student, because they are our future. And even though they may not always get what they want, this is a good and safe place for us to say no. I promise to continue to listen to parents and Linden residents and to take their issues and concerns directly to the superintendent and to work with the superintendent to find solutions. I promise to be more involved, because it is easier to show how much you care than to say how much you care. I promise to ask questions rather than make demands. I promise to stay focused and improve in test scores, helping our students acquire more scholarships to attend college, keeping our students safe, making sure teachers and staff are provided with professional development, support, respect, and appreciation they all deserve. To our newest board members, you must remember that no one board member has the authority to resolve issues by themselves. And always remember that we are policymakers, as well as the Court of Last Appeal. You must know, you must also know, that the future and success of the Linden School District depends significantly on the strength of the board and its leadership. In conclusion, I will repeat myself by saying that rarely is there a fine school without an outstanding board. And rarely is there an outstanding board without an effective board president. Thank you. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the regular meeting held on December 14, 2023, and motion to approve the minutes of the organization meeting held on January 4, 2024. Respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Ulysse.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Moving on to the next agenda item, we will be calling for comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on a topic at, wait, speak on one topic, excuse me, at one time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Guys, will you please notice that we have a clock there? And the clock says three minutes on it. So when you start to speak, it will count down. And please, we would not like to hit the gavel. So at three minutes, will you please end your comments? Because we have a lot of people from the public stating that our meetings are taking too long, because people are speaking more than the required time. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Craig Haller in 120 Donaldson Place. I just have a question in the education report under number 11, item number 69, and page 18. A seminar or whatever, Stop the Believe for the New Jersey Educator. What does that give us as far as positive things for our school system?
Good evening, Ms. O'Hara Lynn.
Good evening.
That is an initiative that came from the New Jersey Department of Education for nurses. It is to help them with understanding and giving them more learning on bloodborne pathogens. So it's for the nurse.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any comments online?
No, none of these.
Now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start my report with acknowledging past employees who passed on. First, we have Mr. Frank Krawski, who was hired by the Linden Board of Education in 2006 as a custodian. During his 11 years as a custodian, he worked at the Science Resource Center, Linden High School Academy, and School Number Eight until his retirement in 2017. Mr. Frank Krawski passed on December 18. Secondly, we have Emily Parrow, who was hired by the Linden Board of Education in 1998 as a part-time aide. During her six years as a part-time aide, she worked at School Number Five until her retirement in 2004. Ms. Emily Parrow passed on January 2. The Linden Board of Education would like to extend our heartfelt sympathy to the families, and we say, may peace and love and memories comfort the families of both Frank and Emily during this difficult time. We have one retirement on our agenda for this evening, and that is to Sherri Pozzano-Worhan. She was hired by the Linden Board of Education as a special education teacher in 1994. Ms. Pozzano-Worhan has been teaching as a resource room teacher for the past 29 years at Linden High School. She also had her hands in sports, as she was the bowling team varsity coach and the girls' softball coach for many years. Her retirement began at the beginning of 2024 on January 2. Thank you, Ms. Sherri Pozano-Worhan, for your passion, dedication to our students, families, and the role of education. On behalf of all, okay, okay. I'll say it on behalf of all of us, we say thank you, and may peace and good health be with you. Now I'll move on to our staff attendance patterns for the month of January. For our staff, from 2023, we had 44% absences compared to this January 2024, 43% absences. Overall, 62% of absences needed substitutes. The days of the week for this year, we had 139 days on Monday, I mean, 139 absences on Monday, 257 on Tuesday, 206 on Wednesday, 218 on a Thursday of this month, and 239 on Friday. Tuesday was the highest day of absences for the month of January. Monday was the lowest. Our staff positions that are still currently open as of January, we have 12 certified positions open and six non-certified positions open. You'll see in the education report that we are honoring Black History Month, and also in the facilities report, district-wide celebrations are going to be taking place. I'd like to remind everyone, today a notice went home to all families that the Linden Department of Parks and Recreation will be hosting their annual Black History Month poster contest. Students have until February 29 to submit their poster, and their posters will be on display at the John T. Gregorio Center. Prizes will also be awarded to students, and this year's theme is Black American Disney Characters. I'd like to also highlight great things that's going to be going on this month for Black History Month. Wax museums will take place, school-wide assemblies, Spirit Days of wearing black, yellow, and green, Family African Dance Night, sample of soul activities to try out different soul food dishes, students speaking over the P.A., sharing facts, door decorating contests, Divine HBCU presentations, partnerships with Keene University, and a school-wide Black Cultural Festival will be taking place this month. All board members will receive this list in an email. I'd like to acknowledge your few students and their achievement in sports. Molly McDonald is a senior, and she was nominated as Linden's National Girls and Women's Sports Day winner. Congratulations to Peter Jarzab. He is a senior on the swim team, and he repeated winning the Union County Championship for the 100-yard freestyle. We also have Philip Salik. He is a senior on the swim team, and he placed third in the 100-yard breaststroke at the Union County Championships. As I stated on Tuesday, our business administrator, Mr. Serapilia, will be providing information on our school budget after our It Takes a Village presentation. And I would like to turn it over to our student advisory on our board, Ms. Azuri Rainey, who's going to share some important facts.
Good evening. I want to start on a positive note by expressing the students' excitement for the upcoming junior and senior semi-formal. We are grateful for the generous food and tree donations offered by Chick-fil-A and Pinholes. The previous semi-formal had an impressive turnout, and we anticipate an even greater one this time. Regarding the new school policy implemented by Yonder, I want to share that it has been proven effective, and operations are running smoothly. Despite initial concerns about it affecting homerooms starting later, classroom disruptions and preventing students from contacting their family, things are running seamlessly. In classrooms, there's a noticeable improvement in student engagement, and everyone is more interactive now that phone access is restricted, based on my observations and feedback I've received. Additionally, I am thrilled to announce my decision to further my education at North Carolina A&amp;T, majoring in computer science. A&amp;T has been a dream school for me, and I look forward to continuing my academic journey at the college this upcoming fall. Thank you. This is my statement.
If I may say something, I, one, congratulations on your commitment to continue your education.
Thank you.
And, two, I am so happy to hear that Yonder pouches are causing the students to actually to start talking to each other. That's what you just said, right?
Yes.
They're not texting, they're talking to each other. Oh, boy, we going back old school here. I am very happy to hear that.
One of the things that I'd like to also highlight is that as a board and as a district, we are going to begin with exposing our elementary students to additional scholarships and just college experience. So we will have district-wide days where we're going to ask all personnel to represent their colleges. But I'd also like to just take a moment, because Ms. Azuri informed me in regards to the amount of scholarships that she has been offered this year. Would you like to share that?
So I applied to 11 colleges, and I received half a million dollars' worth of scholarship money.
Listen, there is something that I have been saying from day one. I look in the audience, and I see a lot of principals from all or different schools are here. We need to start looking for scholarships for our students in elementary school. You guys need to start a scholarship committee in each and every one of your schools. Teach parents how to get the right resources to start looking for scholarships for their children. We are waiting too late to start this process, so I would challenge each and every principal sitting in this room here. Please, get your scholarships together, committee together in elementary school, and start doing it as early as you can. Every one of our students, there is billions of dollars in scholarship out there. There is no student that should leave Linden High without a scholarship. You hear me? No student should leave Linden High, any student who want to go to college. No student should leave Linden High without a scholarship. All right?
We are now going to transition to our It Takes a Village, and this is a true honor for me that we get to always acknowledge an elementary student, as well as a staff member and members from the community. One of the great things that I can say for this evening is that one of the elementary students happens to be related to me. So I have my family in the audience today. Her grandfather and my grandfather were brothers, and it's just a testament to say that we got a great thing going on in our blood. And congratulations to all of the recipients. So we're going to transition over here to begin that part of the presentation.
I'd like to start with calling Mr. Perkins. Please come on up.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, board members, constituents. Thank you so much for being here tonight. It's an honor to be here, because I get to talk about an amazing student. I met this girl several years back when I came back to School Two, and she has exceeded our expectations every year. She is a role model in third grade. Now she's in fourth, but this started in third grade. The way she carries herself, the standard that she puts on herself, the support she gets at home, make her what she is today. All we are doing as a school is to continue to add to her and build upon her foundation. She is a role model where she can sit and talk to her peers with a level ability, maturity. And I've been around a lot of kids for 20 years, and I can honestly say, at this level, this young, the most mature, well-rounded student that I have been around. Amazing. So Michaela Cunningham, you are so deserving of this award, because you represent not just School Two, you represent Linden, and you represent your family at the highest standard that I have seen as an educator for 20 years. So I am proud to be up here talking about you. I'm excited about your future, and I am excited about reading about you when you get older, because I know you're going to do great things. And on top of that, I got to give her props, she's a Jets fan. So thank you for being a Jets fan. And I'm going to share out. Her family was kind enough to share a video. Her father and her go to Jet season tickets games, and they got recognized by the Jets organization. And they got some really good accolades, got moved down towards the front row. She is even in the Ticketmaster commercial. So she's actually on TV for being a dedicated Jet fan and showing her true colors. So again, not only do you represent Linden, you represent the Jets. So I appreciate that, too. All right, guys, let's get it out here.
Next, we are going to speak to a staff member and acknowledge for the hard work, dedication, representation, and a busy employee.
Oh, shoot.
Also, who does, and I'd like to call up Mr. Happel, who would like to further the
Hello? It's on? Oh, hi, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight, board members, Ms. Perkins, everybody. I'm so happy to be here to talk about one of our staff members at Linden High School, who is a dear friend of mine, that I got to know about 10 years ago, when she was a PTA president at Soul, and I was a history teacher at McManus. Superintendent at the time asked if we could jointly do something that became known as Unity Day, which was a big field day between the eighth grades at Soul and McManus. We had done it at McManus earlier, we wanted to bring both schools together, and I got the pleasure of meeting Lakea over there. Then we, if I don't say so myself, we did a great job with that, and it's something that grew and has kind of become a part of the middle school culture, right? It's eighth graders look forward to it every year. Since then, we started working together, three years ago, when I got moved up to the high school, and it was nice having a friendly face there. I was kind of scared, didn't know what to do with the new high school people, and Lakea was that friendly face that really helped me out in the beginning. And I quickly, quickly found out that she legitimately is the heartbeat of that school. She, yes, you know, I don't know who that was in the back. Ms. Carter Blocker, Lakea Carter Blocker, is the heartbeat of Linden High School. She knows everything. She knows everything going on with the staff, everything going on with the students, and nobody, I tell you, nobody cares more about the success of Linden High School. That is every individual person. On a per, every morning, I'm over in the academy building, Lakea comes over, she gets our special needs kids off the bus. What does she do before she does that? She stops by in my office, I'm typing away at emails or on the phone, she stops in to say hello and give me about 7,000 different things that we have to do together, because, like I said, she's involved in everything. She's telling me about student, our senior portraits that have to be done, and we have to send this email to parents, we have to, and thank you, Lakea, for that so much. I appreciate you more than you know. The school, the staff, the kids, again, it would not be the same place without you. I thank you for that, my friend. You are more than deserving of this. You are more than deserving of this. I could keep talking and talking about this. But to save everybody else, um, and to stop the tears from coming, we're gonna just say thank you, keep being you, uh, keep loving that place. We love you back.
One of the things I want to say about you, you never met a stranger. From the time you meet anyone, it's like they feel like they know you. They feel like family. You know, in this world, to have somebody that when you meet them, within a couple of seconds, you feel like family. You have a gift, girl, a real good gift. Thank you. Linden is honored to have you.
Continue to be the light in this world. Congratulations, Ms. Lakia Carter. At this time, we get to, um, now honor a community member or members. And that's what this is all about. It Takes a Village. The city of Linden, we will continue to strengthen our partnerships in and out of the classrooms. We all know that learning is not coming from just a curriculum. It's coming from the discussion, the conversation, your actions. So I'd like to call up, um, to help me with giving out this presentation. I'd like to call up Ms. Crawley, principal of school number five, to acknowledge who our community member will be.
Good evening, everyone. Every morning, we send our students to school. There is a special dedicated group of people who are at their posts to ensure that our students and families get to our school safely. No matter how cold or warm it is, whether it's raining, whether it's sunny out, whether there's snow, which we've had a lot of recently, these everyday heroes, they guide our students and demand order during the busiest moments of drop-off and dismissal. These dedicated heroes are our crossing guards. Words cannot express how important their role is to our school community. Their commitment to monitor our children daily goes unnoticed. I'm sorry, does not go unnoticed. School number five is very fortunate to have four amazing crossing guards. When I call your name, would you please come up? Mrs. Marilyn Holloman, who couldn't be here today. Mr. Henry Rancher, come on up, Mr. Henry. Mrs. Mary Filbert, if you can come on up, Ms. Mary. And Mrs. Luella Malero, if you can come on up, Ms. Luella. Ladies and gentlemen, they not only keep our children safe, but they also form bonds with our families. So I would like to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do every day for our school number five community. You are truly, truly appreciated. Thank you.
This is to show each and every one of you that everyone that works for our school district is important. Everyone is special. And you may think that we don't see you, but we see you. Thank you. You sure you can take black people without a flash?
That will conclude our, um, It Takes a Village. Thank you and congratulations to all of the recipients. That will conclude the superintendent's report.
Alright, uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, good evening. Tonight's presentation is just a quick overview, um, what I like to designate as the Budget 101. Uh, we're not going to be really talking about any numbers right now or anything like that. We're gonna kind of go over the process so that everybody can understand, um, how the budget is put together. Um, you know, the next couple of board meetings will be, um, very budget intensive. So I just wanted to kind of get everyone on board as to, you know, it's, you know, it's over a hundred million dollar budget. Um, I want everyone to understand that it's not just, you know, taking numbers, adding whatever the tax, or rather adding 2% or 3% to it, but there's a lot of work that actually goes into it. So what is a school budget? School budget in theory is about the priorities for our students. Uh, we want it to be about our children and their goals for the future. But the reality is it's a balancing act. It's, you know, getting the most that we can for our students, but with finances in mind to see what the community can afford. Thing to understand is that the schools operate on a fiscal year. But we're, you know, putting the, uh, putting the budget together now for expenses that might not occur until May or June of 2025. Two simple rules of putting together the budget, uh, tax revenue must be within the cap and revenues must equal expenses. So where does the money come from? There's really two main sources when we're talking about school budgets, um, which are the top two, local taxes and state aid. Uh, we do receive money from some other sources, federal aid, grant, interest, tuition and budgeted surplus. When we talk about caps, what we're talking about is the first section, the local taxes. Um, that has a cap on it of 2% that came in, um, you know, over 10 years ago by the state of New Jersey. Uh, the state aid numbers, um, which had been flat for a significant amount of time, have actually been increasing. Uh, Linden experienced a large increase last year, and we're hopeful that we'll be receiving additional monies this year. Uh, the one thing that, important point to note on revenues as it relates to budget is that, um, while expenses can and do change during the course of the year, the main revenues for the school, namely taxes and state aid, uh, do not. So what we're kind of saying here is that we can't ask for more money when we get during, uh, into the school year if expenses begin to rise. Instead, we have to look to spend less in other areas. So we spoke about where the revenues come from, where do they go? Majority of revenues for a school budget go to salaries and benefits. Um, other large areas of expenditures include out-of-district tuition costs, utility costs, repairs and maintenance, professional services, technology and transportation costs, supplies, textbooks and materials, and support services. Uh, as I spoke about before, there is a budget cap that is on local taxes. That's not on the overall budget, but on the, uh, tax portion of the budget. Uh, there is a way to get around that. Um, you can look at doing what's called waivers or bank cap to go above the 2% number. So, you know, really in the, you know, meat and potatoes, how is it that, uh, the board, the administration decides what goes into the budget? And this is really the process that we're in right now. So the BA looks at trend analysis, estimates proposals, um, and estimates the upcoming year's cost. We work with administration, uh, to project numbers of students, look at certain classifications like special education, uh, multi-language numbers, analyze current staffing to meet these needs. You know, as I said, the, the majority of a school's budget is going towards, uh, salary. Um, so we're really, what we're looking at now is the, the staffing that is needed to ensure that we have, um, enough teachers to cover, uh, the students that we have in district, that we have the specialization of the, of these teachers that we need um, for our, our blend of students. Principals and administrators will make recommendations regarding building needs, um, which includes things like, uh, renovations, um, construction, potential construction projects, uh, capital improvements and the like. And we're gonna review mandated costs, salary and benefits, uh, tuition, audit, insurance costs, attorney costs, testing services, contracts, energy and transportation. And that's really what we call the fixed portion of the budget. And the soft costs are really the things that we think of of actually what's needed in the, uh, budget itself. You know, things like school supplies, textbooks, professional development, maintenance, as well as supplies for the departments. So really, what we're talking about here is how, how is it that a budget is put together? So as I spoke about, we review enrollment, we're looking at trends, you know, is enrollment increasing, is it decreasing? For this budget cycle, we're very big into the concept of equity. So what we're looking at right now is the enrollment numbers for all the elementaries, all the middle schools and all the high schools. We actually have a calculation of dollars per student so that each school is getting the same amount of money per student. Some schools will get more money than other schools because they have a bit more students, uh, you know, in their, in their buildings. We're also looking at the configuration of students. Again, we're looking at what the student population is. Do we need to add additional staff? You know, is there a possibility of reducing staff? You know, the makeup of the students themselves. Do we need to add more special education students? I mean, not special education teachers. Do we need more aides? Do we need, uh, more, um, multi-language teachers, bilingual teachers? That's what we're doing right now. It's the data analysis. We're, we're sort of, you know, talking with the principals. We've been having meetings over the last month and a half, um, with the principals, with the supervisors to kind of get that feel of what it, what next year is going to look like. Once we get that idea, we, you know, we, we start calculating, we start adding in the teachers that we figure that we need. For the employees that we currently have, we're moving them up one step on the salary guide. Um, you know, for those who aren't on a salary guide, we assume some sort of increase. This spoke about here for new hires, we are budgeting them at BA Step One. That's what's required, um, by the state of New Jersey. But that's how we're calculating the salary number, you know, on the expense side. In regards to benefits, we're going to be meeting, um, with our insurance agent, um, to get a calculation as to what the health benefit increases are going to be for the, uh, 24, 25 school year. Uh, the 23, 24 school year saw a switch to the state health benefit plan. Um, so our, our increase is going to be sort of tied into what's going on at the state level. Out-of-district tuitions, this is going to be discussions that we're having with our special education department. Uh, we're gonna be looking at current placements. Are there anyone aging out of our district? Do we have any expected placements, um, during the 24, 25? Do we have any expected placements at the end of this school year? Uh, because they are also going to have a tuition cost associated with it. We get estimates from the state of New Jersey for what the tuition costs are going to be for 2024, 25. Uh, transportation costs, part of that is tied into the out-of-district tuition cost. Um, some of the students that are being placed are in, uh, placements that are outside the Linden city limits. Uh, some of them are five, 10, 15 miles away. Um, we're going to be required to provide transportation to them. We do also, again, ties into enrollment. You know, we're looking at our current, uh, makeup. Uh, because some of the, uh, contracts that we have in place, we will most likely renew with them at the CPI, uh, percentage rate. School budgets, as I spoke about before, we, we had a dollar amount that we were doing per pupil. Um, we're really, you know, I'm a big believer in, uh, the supervisors, the principals, you know, building their own budget. We're not looking for us to dictate to them, um, what's needed in their building. We're looking for them to tell us what they need. So we're providing them an overall budget number based on their student enrollment and they're deciding where the money needs to go. Uh, that's also occurring with, uh, with our supervisors, um, with our technology department, uh, our athletic department, our co-curricular. And in addition to, you know, setting aside those budgets, we're, like I said, we're also talking with them about their staffing needs. Um, same thing with special education, uh, administrative costs. And, you know, what we're looking at, um, in those lines is, you know, especially what spending has occurred in the past as well as, you know, what we're anticipating spending in the future. Finally, we're looking at, you know, capital projects. What improvements are we looking to make to the school district? We're looking at the district's long-range facility plan. Um, that was a plan that was put together that discussed what additional capital projects the school district wanted to do, um, over a five-year period. Again, we're talking with the principals, we're talking with the supervisors, we are talking, you know, with the Board of Education. Um, we're, you know, with, uh, myself, the, uh, maintenance department is doing our own observations of, you know, needed replacements of, of equipment. So how is that we come up with the numbers? You know, salary, we kind of touched on before. Uh, for other items, you know, it, when we can, we're gonna get a proposal. The architect's gonna provide a budget for capital projects. If we're looking at buying equipment, um, you know, a vendor, we will get a preliminary quote for a vendor, let's say, like I listed up here, for a hundred Chromebooks. Uh, supplies, maintenance, we're gonna use what I call is trend analysis. We're gonna look at five years' worth of spending. What have we been spending over the last couple of years in the individual supply lines and the maintenance lines? You know, is it going up? Is it going down? Um, you know, is it relatively flat? Uh, and that's going to dictate to us how the expenditures are going, or rather what we're gonna budget for in the future. Again, this is all compiling the information. Um, we're working on the expense side, which is the majority of the work in terms of the budget. Uh, the next portion is working on the revenue side. The reason why we're working on that later on is because one of the biggest portions of the budget, the state aid, typically isn't released until February or March. So we take that information, we use the federal aid that we calculated based on trend analysis. Uh, interest, again, based on trend analysis. If we're receiving any tuition costs, or rather tuition revenue, uh, if we have any current expected contracts that we have on the books, we're gonna, we're gonna play those forward and we're gonna come up with the estimated revenues exclusive of... And we're going to come up with the estimated revenues exclusive of taxes. Then we're going to calculate the tax number, and it's a simple subtraction. We're going to take the preliminary expenses that we worked out, that we discussed in the previous slides. We're going to subtract out the state aid that we have, the federal aid that we've estimated, the interest in tuition costs, or rather, interest in tuition and other revenues. And we're going to come up with the local taxes needed to support the budget. And this is really the key, you know, where are the taxes at? You know, the Board of Education is going to make a recommendation to us as to where they would like the taxes to go. If we're over that number, if the number's over, you know, the taxes are over the cap, we can look to go back to the expense side. We can look to cut expenses, you know, the quote, the expression is to sharpen the pencil. It could be that, you know, looking at the trend analysis, maybe we'll say, listen, maybe the expenses aren't going to be as high this year. We might have to go back to some of the projects that we were looking at doing and say, listen, we might have to hold off on one of these. It might be that we're looking at, hey, listen, all that staff that we wanted to add, maybe we can't add one or two of those people. We also have the ability to tap into surplus and reserves. The district has money set aside as undesignated revenue, or rather, undesignated reserves that can be utilized to support the 24-25 budget. Really, in the last case scenario, which we're trying to avoid, would be to look at any sort of waivers or bank cap that would increase taxes above the cap. If expenses need to be cut, we're going to do it in consultation with the administrative staff, the finance committee, and the Board of Education, the superintendent's office, and the business office. When we finally get to the point where the revenues equally expenses, we're going to have a preliminary budget. The Board of Education is going to get this big, massive book, which is our budget book. This budget book has all of the district's information in it. It's going to have all the financial backup as to how we actually got those numbers. Because we're not looking to hide anything here, we're being very transparent. We want to show you how we came up with those numbers. The next steps after that, we're, you know, and we have a balanced budget, we have a preliminary budget, we're going to be presenting that budget sometime in March. Board is going to vote on that and approve that budget. After that point, it's going to go down to the county office. The preliminary budget is going to be reviewed by the county superintendent, the county BA. Once they approve it, it's going to become the final budget. The final budget is again presented to the public and voted on by the Board of Education. It's important to note that changes can still occur at this point. Changes can really occur at any point, you know, whatever, when we have the preliminary budget presented to the Board of Education, if changes are deemed necessary, we can make it at that meeting. After the preliminary budget is voted on and approved, we can still make changes after that. When the board approves, the final budget is going to become the approved budget for the next school year. At that point, no more changes can be made to the overall number. Obviously, we, as I spoke about before, expenses are going to be changing during the course of the school year. Changes within the budget are allowed, you know, which is called transfers. If expenses come in a little bit higher than what we anticipated, we're going to have to take money out from another line to cover that. Now, you know, again, this is, you know, the laws that have been on the books, I think, for like 10 or 15 years. There used to be a time when you did vote on your budget. You know, every, every school district in the state of New Jersey used to have an April election. That's actually when the board member elections also used to occur. They did allow for a change to move the elections to November. Part of it was financial. It actually cost the district money to hold those elections in April. And part of it was the fact that they said, listen, if your budget falls within these constraints, if it's under the tax cap, you don't have to have it voted on by the general public. If there is a need for additional monies, the Board of Education does have the ability to go out for a second question. A second question, because the first question used to be the budget itself, you know, the approval of the budget was considered the first question, so anything additional spending proposals, which would be additional monies that the Board of Education was asking for from the town, was considered a second question. It was voted on, would be voted on separately from the budget. It's going to be voted on in November for additional spending in current year. The main thing about the second question is that it cannot contain anything needed to run the school district. So you can't put a principal salary on there because a principal is needed for any school. And obviously, if you put a principal salary on there, or you put a principal on there, you know, it would be more indicative to have people come out and vote yes for it. But the reason why you can't put anything that's needed to run the school is that if it's voted down in the second question, it can't become part of the regular budget. So if you put something on there to say, do a, you know, I know a couple of years ago, the Wayne Board of Education had put on to run a full-day kindergarten. It got voted down. They actually found money within their budget during the course of the year. They tried to institute it, and the state of New Jersey said, no, you can't do that. The taxpayers had said they didn't want to pay, they didn't want to have the full-day kindergarten. You're not allowed to institute it. So that's it. That's, again, I'm kind of giving a brief overview of the budget procedures that we have in place. As I said, the next couple of meetings will be kind of going over portions of the budget. We'll be having a preliminary budget presentation in March, and then we're going to be looking to do a final budget presentation approval probably sometime in April. So that's it. Tried to be quick. Does anybody have any questions or?
How much money?
How much money what?
How much money does it take to run our school district?
Well, this year, our operating budget, inclusive of the Fund 20, was about $160 million.
All right. And then how much of that money is donated by our real estate taxes?
I believe the number was, let me check, I think it was around 90. It was $92,215,000.
So the people of Linden and real estate taxes, right?
Yes.
So real estate taxes in the city of Linden contribute $92 million to run our school district.
Yes. And that's actually a reduction of $2 million from the prior year.
Because of the cost of living and all these expenses, is it expected to go up this year? You think our budget is going to go up or is it going to stay?
No, the, I believe we will be seeing an additional increase in state aid that will not require us to ask for a tax increase.
And would it, is the state aid, would it be because of the demographics?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's going to be a couple of factors that affect your state aid. Number one is the free and reduced population, that would affect it significantly. And free and reduced population and our multi-language learning population have both gone up significantly. And it hasn't, I don't even know if it's necessarily that the free and reduced has gone up significantly. We've just had a big push in the fall to really send out those free and reduced applications at numerous parental events. So we were able to get higher numbers in regards to the free and reduced. But our multi-language learner population has been going up significantly, which does result in additional state aid.
What about special needs population? Does that also?
That does too. I, I don't have those numbers here, so I couldn't say to you if that's also gone up significantly or not. But I know those two areas have gone up very much. And in addition, as I spoke about, for a number of years, the state aid, the state had come up with this formula for the state aid. And it was this great formula that was going to result in additional monies for schools like Linden, school districts like Linden, and less money for someone else. And the state had this formula but never was instituting it. They just basically kept state aid frozen for a number of years. About, like I said, about five years, four or five years ago, they said, all right, we're going to start instituting the state aid formula, but it's going to be slowly, which has resulted in these increases in state aid for the city of Linden. This is the last year of that, you know, basically instituting. So at the, for the 24-25 school year, the state aid formula is going to be fully implemented. So that should result in additional state aid, in addition to the enrollment changes that we spoke about.
Thank you for the.
I just have one more question, if you have.
I have a question, just wanted to say thank you because you broke it down for us. Because, you know, we always have a lot of questions when it comes to the budget, and you made it as simple as you possibly can. And when we have to do it in March, we get to see what we really have to do. And it's kind of like, not easy, but it's like an easy jump into it, so you know what we're looking for and stuff like that. I know it took time for you to do that, but I thank you very much.
Thank you, that was my intent.
I have one more question. Last year, because the government changed the health insurance, a lot of school district taxes went up because the cost of health insurance went up.
Yes.
Do, is there anything right now, do you see anything on the horizon right now that states that the governor gonna put a monkey wrench on us that will cause health insurance rates to go up, that will cost the district money?
I'll probably have a better answer for that after next, within two weeks, because I'm meeting with my, with our insurance agents to kind of get a feel for what's going on with that. I know, I know what you're talking about in terms of the state had been kind of augmenting the state health benefit plan by making donations to it, which I've kind of pulled back on to sort of have the plan run itself, which is, you know, did lead to some big increases. We actually went into the plan because of the fact that we were on a private plan, and our increase was going to be something like 40%, which was astronomical, by going into the state health benefit plan compared to what we would have, what it would have cost us, it saved us something like $3 million. So we're going to meet with the, with the insurance agent. You know, I, it's, you know, a lot of factors go into it, you know, whether, what our experience is, you know, because it's, you know, obviously, it's going to be dependent upon what the overall experience is for the state, for all those that are in the plan. But we'll have a better idea by the next board meeting.
You said it, our plans is for three to five years. We have all these school buildings, and most of the roofs are going to be ready for repairs in the next three to five years.
Well, we're, we're actually on the agenda tonight. We're looking at doing replacements of four of the roofs, not complete replacements, just the portions of the roof that need to get replaced. We also had a vendor come out to, you know, he did an infrared scan of the roofs themselves. And what they recommended wasn't a repair, it was more of a, what was it? It was a rest.
Restoration.
Yeah, restoration of the roofs, so that it wouldn't be the full expense of a replacement, but it was a plan to extend the life of the roofs. And, and yeah, and the long-range facility plan is something that is required, you know, it's a plan for the next five years' worth of work. But obviously, it's a, it's a living document, so it can and will be changed based on whatever the needs are of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. John, that was amazing. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, very, very good information.
Good evening. Education Committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent Schools and Assistant Superintendent, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items 1 through 23. Do I get a second, please?
Second. Roll call. Oh, excuse me. Any discussion?
Discussion is over.
Ms. Corillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ullis?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the personnel report.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I approve items 1 through 49, and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Any discussion?
Are there any questions on the personnel report? Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Corillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes, but I'm abstaining on voting number eight, number one.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ullis?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Oh, no, no, we have to do something else first. Yeah, we almost finished, so we'll do it here.
Moving on to the finance report, please.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items 1 through 33. I respectfully ask for a second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Corillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ullis?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to the planning and policy report. Oh, I'm sorry. Moving on to buildings and grounds, my apologies, Sam.
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, looking for second, items 1 through number 10.
Second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Corillo?
I would like to recuse myself from item 7. Yes, all other items.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ullis?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Now, moving on to planning and policy. The Planning and Policy Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendents, present the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval, first reading of policies 1250, visitors 3163, advertising on school property, policy 3542, school food service program, policy 3542.4, breakfast offer versus serve, 3542.5, lunch, lunch offer versus serve, and number two, delete the policy 3542.2, school meal program arrears. I respectfully ask for a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyssy is?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
At this time, we'd like to formally congratulate all of our new hires that were approved this evening. And if you would like to come up to the podium to say a few words, this is the time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Meremuchekwendu, and I was just approved. I was just approved as the Public Information Officer. And I just wanted to come up here and just express my thanks. I want to say thank you to the Board President, Dr. Burghammer. I want to say thank you to Superintendent Perkins. I want to say thank you to the whole board for approving this. You know, my parents were educators, so education is really, really important to me. And communicating, Public Information Officer, my job will be to help facilitate communication with, within the district, between the district and the community. And I'm so excited to do that, because communication is about telling stories. And I heard so many good stories here tonight, all these awards that were given, so many great stories here tonight. And this job, I wanted to come up and say that this is a real full circle moment for me. I was talking about telling stories, and my story is that I had been doing communications, and then life took me in a different direction. A family member got ill, I had to raise some kids, took time off, was wondering if I could get back to that path. And when this opportunity came along, it really was meaningful to me. So because of that, because it means so much to me, I am just going to be committed, engaged, dedicated, and thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Lawrence McGee. I have a long speech prepared for you guys. Just joking. First, I want to say good evening to everybody. Thank you, thank you guys for nominating me for the role of Vice Principal. I'm a Linden guy. Like I said, I grew up in the Linden Public School system, so I think I know what it takes to be here. And I'm just grateful to continue to push the envelope forward for our kids and be an advocate for them. And once again, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Good evening. Tanya Grissette, 422 Southwood Avenue. I came tonight because I'm a little concerned, as someone just mentioned and was hired about, and we talk about communication month after month. I'd like to know why. There was an incident at Linden High School Tuesday afternoon where somebody that wasn't employed or attends that school entered into the school, mixed into the crowd after a fire drill. And I learned about it from the Board of Education or the principal, whoever sends the communication out today, about an hour and a half before this meeting. Any other time, if there's a drill, if there's an incident and it's under investigation, further communication would come out later on, but that communication comes out the day it happens. There's been incidents within the district, at other schools, where there's been lockdowns, even in other buildings. School one is two blocks from the high school, that a stranger was in the building. Whether they're, they were a minor or an adult, to me, that's uncalled for. And for me to find out about it that afternoon on social media and not from within the district, I was appalled. And I came here tonight to talk about it, but then I got communication through email and a phone call about an hour and a half, two hours before tonight's meeting. So since we talk about communication, and like I said, communication could have came out that day about the incident, that there's going to be an investigation into what, how it occurred and what happened. But we should know about it as parents immediately, because there's always what ifs. Okay, we don't have metal detectors, okay? We have yonder patches, but we don't have metal detectors. What if that person came in, as they said in the email, an intruder with a knife or a gun? I'm not only concerned about the children, my child, but the staff as well, because I did see video of the fight and some staff that was there. Now, granted, fights can happen in any of our buildings any day, but when we talk about communication and safety, that needs to be communicated ASAP. Okay? My other comment that I wasn't really going to talk about, but that's also been lingering on my mind. When my child comes home and tells me that an administrator, not even a faculty member, staff, teacher, aide, an administrator is going to yo my child, I don't answer to yo, not on the street, not at work, not at school, not anywhere. I'm sorry if I'm going over a little bit. He had my permission to not respond to anybody that yos him, because I won't answer to anybody yoing me. And I think that the people we're hiring or the people that are employed, maybe we need a little bit of communication and retraining on how to properly speak to people. And I get not all of our kids are, you know, top of the line and, you know, don't know how to speak properly, proper etiquette. Mine does. And to me, maybe some of these children need that proper etiquette so they can learn from our leaders, from our administrators. Thank you.
Ms. Grissette, I'll be in communication with you about your concerns. Thank you.
And please, we are really trying to adhere to the three minutes rule. I know that what, I did not want to interrupt you, but please, we are really trying to adhere to the three minute rule. Thank you.
Craig Hallen, 120 Donaldson Place. It was a nice presentation about how a budget gets put together. And I'm looking forward to looking at the school budget when I get a chance to get a copy of it. But nothing in the budget or anything about the, I believe it would second question is called. I know at Tuesday's meeting, there were talk about what the new high school would cost. And I believe, and I may be wrong, that this would come up as like a second question, that hey, this is additional money that we don't need to operate the schools for the year, but this is additional money that we're going to need to finance for a new building or to put up for a new building. And I believe the numbers that I heard the other night are almost as high as what the school budget is for a year. And therefore, is there going to be any time or a referendum or anything for the public to have comments or to vote on whether or not the money should be approved for a high school? Thank you very much.
I wanted to go off on me next. There we go. So, and I don't want to speak for the board in regards to whether or not a new high school or anything like that is, is going to be done or not. But a, if there was going to be those discussions, it would be a referendum. And a referendum is not a second question. It's a separate election that the town, that would be put forth before the town to decide whether or not they wanted to fund a, a new building. Typically speaking, you know, and again, I don't want to speak for the board, there would be multiple meetings in regards to whether or not that would be something, you know, that would be something that would be done over a, a long period of time, because you would want to provide the, the townspeople with the need for it, the costs associated with it, to allow for input. Again, I'm not speaking, I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, but, you know, it would be at board meetings, we would be going to things like PTA meetings, we would be going out to the community to, again, provide the information for why it would or wouldn't be needed, or what, rather, why it would be needed, and, you know, leave it up to the, the people of Linden as to whether or not they wanted it to be provided. A second question is more, you know, it's, it's smaller type items, because the, you know, like I said, the, the building cost would be so massive that the, the tax increase would be astronomical for, you know, for one year. A referendum is sort of like a mortgage, you know, it's, you know, you don't buy your house all upfront, you pay for it over 20, 25 years, and that's similar to how a referendum works. You would bond it, it would be, the bonds would be sold so that you would have the money to pay for the, for the construction cost, and then you would be paying for, paying off those bonds and the interest rates on it over 20, 25 years.
Okay, I believe that answered my questions for now. If I have any more, I know where to find you.
Yep.
Any other comments from the public?
133 Princeton Road. One of the things I was going to bring up, Ms. Grissette brought it up about Tuesday's incident. Also, my daughter told me that some of the students, well, none of the students have access to Genesis. And they, some of the parents are, I guess, are still having problems getting signed in, or the parents haven't given them, you know, access to check on their grades or make sure their assignments were received by the teacher and graded. So I believe the students did have access at one point to Genesis. Is that something that you can look into to try and get the, you know, students to get access again? So when the marking period is almost ending, they're not finding out two days before that maybe some assignments are missing or, you know, because this has happened in the past where they weren't graded and we found, you know, the teacher, you know, may have overlooked it in an email. So that's another thing I wanted to bring up. Also, want to congratulate all the It Takes a Village Awards. Mrs. Carter Blocker, I don't know if you're still there, but congratulations. Like Mr. Happel said, you are the heart of Linden High School. You know everything that is going on in that school. So congratulations, well deserved. Also, I'll, I have, haven't forgotten, but I will bring you brownies very soon. And I think there was one other thing, but I can't remember right now. So just want to say have a good evening and I'll talk to you soon. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey. LHS Social Studies teacher, proud LEA president. Good evening. Ms. Ulyss, I hope your first month on the board has been fruitful. I'm looking forward to working with you, doing some good things. As we begin the new year, I want to take a moment to highlight some of the wonderful programs the LEA has held and will be holding over the next few months. At the tail end of 2023, across the district, our members held multicultural nights through our Pride and FAS grants. These are member funded programs, and these are member funded dollars. You know, these are dollars we get from our, our state affiliate, the NJEA, to help us plan programs for our students. I've said for years, and, and my predecessors have said, that our commitment to our students doesn't end when the contract time ends. And these programs are just examples of that. The multicultural programs were built to celebrate Linden's diversity, to build bridges in our community. They would not be possible without the, without the commitment of our membership. Coming up soon, at the high school, staff is going to be holding a Lunar New Year celebration. At the elementary levels, we're holding book clubs and other events to keep our students and our families engaged and keep the schools as a center of focus. As these events continue, I will give you all dates. I hope you all can come and join us. We'd love to have you. On a more serious note, a previous community member spoke about concerns at the high school. Those safety concerns have been brought to me as well. I know that this board has been dedicated and committed to taking steps, steps towards safety for our staff and our students. My big hope is that this commitment, as it morphs into action, there is clear communication about what that action is going to look like, about timelines and when these things are going to be taking place. These are things that, you know, our staff and our students deserve. I thank you all. Have a wonderful night. We'll talk soon.
Is there anyone else online?
For everyone out there, I, safety is very important. Of course, you know, we always are trying to, to, to make sure staff and students are safe. We are in the process of working on additional security. Of course, we cannot talk about it, but we are hopefully in the next, how long? Couple of weeks? Yes. In the next couple of weeks, we would be implementing another safety measure to make sure students are safe. I do not know, mister, I can't talk about what we putting in, right?
No, don't talk about.
All right, so we can't talk about, all I'm saying is that we are very, very concerned. We, we know that within a second, all hell could break loose. We know that. And we are implementing, we in the stages of implementing another measure that we hope can keep our students and our staff safe. As for the communication aspect of it, I would ask Mrs. Perkins, would you look into the communication aspect of it? Because the parent and the community should be immediately informed. If anything happens that could put their children at danger in, in, in harm's way, they should be informed. So we really, really need to take a closer look at all communication. I'm so grateful we have a new Community Public Information Officer now. So a lot of the stuff that have been moving slowly, we would have someone now, we have someone now responsible for communicating all information to the public, to parents and to students.
Yes. Now, we're going to move to any new and unfinished business?
So I'm going to add to the new and unfinished business, because what Tanya spoke about, I was going to speak about in this portion. We found out basically, because we're on the board, what happened a couple of days ago. And if you have students in the high school, you would have found out also, because the students spoke. So throughout listening through the word and gossip, it came to the attention that the kid had a ski mask, the kid or the person had a kid's ski mask, that they snuck into the school, or they had a knife also. And I said, those are unconfirmed reports, okay? Even parents came up to me, asking me. So that's from Tuesday to today. So yes, I think. So yes, I think we should have communicated at least that day and say, we are investigating, this is current investigation, or so on and so forth. So at least the parents would have been advised. Because it's true, when I saw the email today, I was in the same boat. The, the thing, I'm part of the board that I get to know a little more, but that, that was concerning for every other parent that's out there that doesn't have that. And God forbid it happens in an elementary school or anywhere else, and we're adding safety measures as we can see we've added, what we've added here, and lockdowns. So we know, so people know, but I think our communication does have to get a little better there. And granted, it doesn't happen often, but it's a stepping stone to learn from what happened, move forward and let's be a step ahead if it ever, if it ever happens again, God forbid.
Anyone else on new and unfinished business?
Yes. Um, not so if you know guys, but today was a big fight also on the Speedway. I was waiting for my daughter in front of the Speedway, and no one police, not one car of the police was at the school, at the high school. I have to call them. I have to call them. And I said, I am Diana Ara, and I'm part of the Board of Education, and I don't see a police here, anywhere around 40, 50 kids at the Speedway. There were two girls, one was arrested. I saw it. I thought that we were going to have at least one police car at the Speedway when we get out of, when the kids get out of the school. He wasn't there. So what are we doing? The community, he really has to, to, to be informed of what is going how and what is going on. And the police, at least one should be close because then after I call, yes, a couple of minutes, they got into, to the Speedway. At, at least five, they got into, to the Speedway right away. But it happened today, and I was like, wow. And I never pick up my daughter in front of the high school. I always pick her up in the, at the back, but today because we had to do something, and it was in the middle of that, I said, please come, come to the car.
Mr. Serapilia, we are happy to-
If I may, for one second, this, as everybody knows, the Speedway is, is not, is not our property, right? That doesn't mean that the administration is not in constant contact with the police department about ways, um, to address some of the issues that have been arising over there, but we also have no say over how the, the chief of police assigns, assigns his personnel. But I do know for a fact that we continue to speak with them about ways to, uh, improve the situation over there. I don't think it's in anyone's best interest for us to be disclosing those conversations because as I said, if we talk about ways that we're trying to make our students more secure, it, it diminishes the effectiveness of, of some of those strategies if people know what they are. But again, I just want to remind everybody, that's not our property. Um, we don't have any ability to make that property more secure or less, other than what we're doing, which is to be in constant communication with the, uh, with the police department.
That is correct.
Anything else on new and unfinished business?
I want to talk about our scholarship program. I know I mentioned it earlier today, but I want to go back there. I really think, Mrs. Perkins, if you could really, um, work with the, um, the principals of each school to start a scholarship committee and aggressively, um, with our new, um, public information officer, one of the projects I'd like to see happen, I would like to see us to really aggressively help our students get scholarships. And if you ask a lot of parents right now, they don't even know how to get started. And I would like to see it get started in our elementary schools where we could really get us, or, or, um, classes and how to apply for scholarships for, for the parents, do whatever we can. I think this is an initiative we should really aggressively start working on so that all of our graduates could get scholarships to go to college. There's money out there. Why don't we, why aren't we getting it?
What do you guys think?
We refer. We need it.
We need it, right?
We need it. And, um, let us start young so they can get it, so they know what's going on, and the parents can understand what to do and get on it, you know? There's money out there, so why not?
Millions. The way it's done is like this. Let's assume, for example, you start looking for a scholarship in the fifth grade, all right? You send out 20 applications in the fifth grade for a scholarship. Five companies will write you back, and they will tell you, your child is too young. But you know what? They will give you all the instructions you need to do to get that scholarship. So if from the fifth grade, you start applying for scholarships, you get five people calling you back in the fifth grade, five in the sixth, five in the seventh, by the time you reach, this young lady's, um, you, where, where you are right now, you could have half a million dollars in scholarships, right? I, I just don't know how to pronounce your name. It's, it's unique. I hope you have a pet name. But this is what we needed to do. We need to part of our programs. Students come to school for two reasons. One, to either go to school to get a job or go to school to get to college. I am still paying off school, school student loans right now at my age. We don't want that to happen to our children when there is money out there. So please, work on the scholarship committee in each and every school. Help our students, help our teachers get the scholarship the children need for college.
I have a question. When we get those messages out, is there any way that we can, um, provide the information in a different language as well? Like for Spanish speaking parents or anything like that? I believe on the website, there are, um, of, um, information that's provided in other languages, I believe.
Yes, our, um, notification system can, does translate in multiple languages.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else under new and unfinished business? Okay, at this time, we'll move on to board member comments. Ms. Pino.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone here tonight. Um, congratulations to all the new hires. Congratulations and welcome. And, um, to the students, Ms. Yeah, Ms. Cunningham, and, uh, congratulations. And to Molly and Peter and Philip, congratulations. And, um, Ms. Zoe. Congratulations, sweetheart. We are so proud of you. Um, and if you can tell the other students how you got where you got and what you did to get where you, to get to where you was at, it would be so much appreciated. Coming from a peer is fine. Not coming from an adult, they don't understand it. They think it's too much for coming from a peer person, that I believe that it will work out fine. Okay? I appreciate you so much and thank you so much for everything that you do. And plus, the pouches, I heard the same thing. The kids fought us on it, but now it seems to be okay. Right? Thank you for listening to them and thank you for bringing it back to us. We do appreciate it, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. That's it for me.
Congratulations to the individuals who received the It Takes a Village Award. Also, congratulations to Chikwando Meramu. Excited to see a public information officer working with our school district. Also to Mr. McGee, congratulations. I know that you're a dedicated staff member. I have seen you directing the bus traffic at school number two, and how well you interact with the youth at the PAL building, so I'm sure you'll do a great job. Thank you so much. I would also like to express my sincere condolences to the family and loved ones of Frank Karkowski and Emily Perrow. We thank them for their dedication to our school district. I would also like to wish Cherry Pisano Weirhan, a good and relaxing retirement. Thank you for your dedication on being a special education teacher. We are grateful for all the teachers and staff who deal with the students on a daily basis. I give you all the credit for having the patience, dedication, knowledge and passion to teach. On Tuesday, January 23rd, I attended the LEAD, which stands for Law Enforcement Against Drugs, graduation at school number eight. Special thanks to the Linden Police Department for collaborating with the schools in order to build a stronger community. Guest speakers were Mayor Derek Armstead, Police Chief Dave Hart, and Superintendent Atea Perkins. Early intervention is important, especially for households who do not share information about how harmful drugs, violence and peer pressure can be. I personally came from a household where speaking of drugs or violence was non-existent. As a child, I remember learning about drugs through the DARE program at school number two. DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. The Drug Abuse Prevention Education Program is designed to equip elementary children with skills for resisting peer pressure to experiment with tobacco, drugs and alcohol. The program consists of police officers who visit elementary school classrooms and educate children on the dangers of drugs and violence. I believe bringing this type of awareness to our younger elementary students will leave a powerful impact on their futures. I would also like to thank Superintendent Perkins for organizing the Linden High School cheerleading team, marching band and ROT students in attending two major ribbon cutting events in Legacy Square this past month. The students did a phenomenal job, and please keep up the good work. You represent our town very well. Thank you all and have a good evening.
See you, Lysy.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to congratulate everyone who went home today with a Takes a Village Award. The new hires, congratulations, welcome on board. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
I'm going to be short also. Congratulations to our Takes a Village Award winners, our new educators coming along on. Congratulations, welcome to Linden. And if you've been part of Linden, you're still welcome again, okay? It is going on another roll. And once again, safety is number one on my list. So the same way the kids and staff and administrators, everybody comes in, I want them to go home. I don't want them, I don't want anybody in this staff to have to make that worst phone call to the family members. So that's my concern. Behind closed doors, we're talking and we're hopefully moving in the right direction. We're going to hit bumps and we're going to learn from the bumps that we're hitting. Hopefully with nothing major in between. Thank you. Have a good night, be safe.
Good evening. I would like to express my condolences to the family and friends of Mr. Karkowski, excuse me if I mispronounced the last name, and Ms. Perrow. Um, congratulations on your retirement to, uh, Ms. Pisano Warham. Thank you for your dedication to the Linden Public School System. Um, and a congratulations to the It Takes a Village Award recipients, the new hires, and a congratulations to our school representative. Um, and to piggyback on what Ms. Pino said, I do hope that you provide your classmates with maybe the steps that you took or who you spoke to in your guidance. Um, and Mr. Serapilia, thank you for your presentation. Um, and that's it for me.
Good evening, everyone. Short. Congratulations to the new hired. Welcome, welcome on board. I'm very happy to have a communication, um, chief. We really need it, and I hope that we really get the, what we need out there, the information the correct way to everybody. Welcome. Uh, welcome to the winners of, um, It Takes a Village. This is really a everyday job 24/7, so thank you, thank you for being there for our kids. This is really what they need and what the community needs to, to grow. Thank you so much and have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd like to congratulate the new appointees and also the It Takes a Village recipients. I'm also very pleased to hear today's report on the implementation of the Yonder Pouches. The board is working very hard alongside the superintendent and her cabinet to push the district forward. As a board, we are constantly staying abreast of the things going on in the district. In the spirit of forward thinking, any opportunity a board member has to learn new ways to positively impact our district, we do. I had the chance to visit a high school in Essex County to volunteer and assist with the revitalization of the school. Given the opportunity to do so, called for thought leadership, I informed the board of some of the things I learned that we can possibly implement in our district. I say this to say, we are always working and are bringing new ideas to the table that can enhance the district. I'm thankful for your attendance tonight and look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Well, we're going to do something different tonight. We're going to have the last word from our superintendent.
I wanted to take another moment and address the communication. While the comment came in from two members, and I do plan to communicate, as I stated, with Ms. Crissette, and I heard from Ms. Hernandez, I want to publicly inform all that yes, communication is key. The communication to the families should have been presented in a timely manner. Once we were made aware of it, that's when the communication went out. It is not a practice that we are, um, have been pushing through or, or neglecting to do, but this did happen, and I want to reassure you all, all parents, staff, students, that we do not take safety and security lightly. The, um, there were many narratives that were put out there, and it will be our goal to always share the correct narrative. So, um, that was an error and it will not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Corrello?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Oh, we forgot to mention Saturday is the Olympics, the Special Olympics is Saturday.
Yeah.
Forgot to mention it.
Azori Ray.